All right. Well, should I listen to this? Or is it very?
All right. Good evening. Welcome to today's session of June 10th. Donna, give your rule call, please.
I will. Councilmember Blush?
Here.
Councilmember Sterns is absent this evening. Councilmember Gilmore?
Here.
Mayor Nesko?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Sherman?
Here.
Oh, I'm sorry. I said that wrong. Councilmember Sterns is on Zoom. So let's.
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you. It's Councilmember Sapp who is not here this evening. Councilmember Gutierrez?
Here.
All right. Tonight, City Manager Mark Vigler has given me some information about service levels.
Not just City Manager. We've got the whole crew here for you tonight, Council. Yes, thank you. So this is a follow-up from our May 5th retreat when we went through that service level discussion. The intent here is to provide a little more information on the lowest priorities selected by Council for that exercise. So you can better understand financial impacts, community impacts, internal impacts, and what some of the options may be to be considered by Council moving forward. So I don't obviously expect any decisions tonight, but it's more information for you to, you know, to develop some of these decision points. It is helpful to get as much feedback tonight so we can move forward and start, you know, formulating that budget and determining where we're going to go in 2026 and 2027. Because some of these may be phased as we go through some of the options here. You'll see some of the options that kind of phase some of the reductions. Service equivalent to the expenditure, right? Some of them might just be full elimination services based on the Council's input at the same time. I don't have a goal for you tonight necessarily, a dollar figure. We just kind of want to work through the, I don't know. I don't even remember how many it was, but the highest, highest of the lowest priorities, if you will. And so we'll just work down the list. I've got a hard copy in front of you, electronic copy on the screen. And we'll work it through. So it might jump around by department, if you will. So we'll start with Community Economic Development and Jay talking about animal shelter services.
Do you mind if I just handle animal shelter and animal control at the same time?
Oh, yeah.
Because they're part of it. They're very related, so. So, yeah, this was the one that in the retreat had the highest or I guess reddest net score. And this is the animal shelter function. As you might remember, came to Community Economic Development from the Police Department just a couple of years ago. While it was being operated in the Police Department, it was a slightly different kind of paradigm, say, in the COVID period. We just had COVID. We operated under contract with a lot of other providers where we could just network out our dogs very quickly. We paid, it varied between receiving agency, but, you know, we pay them $200. They take our dog and then they adopt their dogs and so on. And that's, that's how it was working well. In the post-COVID era, when people started having to do a lot of return to work, economic conditions changed, so on. A lot of those partners that we had been able to just source the dogs out to were no longer able to receive them. And so we started having to take on more and more formal duties at the shelter. And so our budget went from, I think, about $80,000. And we had two part-time individuals working simultaneously. To now we have one full-time, three part-time. And we have a current status, a current census of about 10 dogs. It varies day to day. It seems like we get two out and three in. And it's just kind of the world we're living in. The shelter, while it is a public service, people come to us to, you know, have surrenders or find their missing dogs or whatnot. So there's some level of public service. But more than anything, it's, it's an internal service. It supports animal control functions, code enforcement functions, and law enforcement specifically by giving officers a place to house impounded, surrendered animals without an animal shelter. Quite frankly, we're at pretty, like, if we didn't have one at all, we're, we're pretty limited options on what our law enforcement officers would be able to do if they encountered a dog that needed to be contained. Because as soon as we're taking care of it, we become an animal care and control agency under Washington state law. And you're obligated to hold it for 72 hours if it's complete stray, 14 days if you know the property owner, the dog owner. And so once you're obligated to care for it, there's a bunch of rules on how fast we care for it. It starts kind of a trickle-down. So the, the shelter, I, I tell people, it is, it is on or it is off. There's very little that we can do related to level of service out there beyond what we're currently doing. But we could always take more money and do more, but, but it's very hard to do less because if you were making pretty minimum staffing, be very aware of our costs, try and keep the budget down. But they are, you know, four times higher than where they were a couple of years ago when we were able to just network out a much smaller population of dogs. And so again, the internal impact is really, in my opinion, mostly to the Police Department. Because if they're having to take the dogs somewhere, maybe be able to get them in and up the welfare at the Mason County Humane Society. Might be able to find a place with one of the local providers or are taking them to like trade services in Olympia, which is, you know, kind of akin to our officers driving a prisoner into a swampy or something. It takes a lot of time off the books for them to get somebody to welfare or whatnot. So I would say that animal control, which is, which is part of this, we have our, our position that's currently in the budget is wanting animal control officer. Right now, it's being filled by lead tech because we didn't have anybody that required certification to meet the animal control officer cert right now. The person we had last year traded positions within the city and then eventually left. It was something different. So the investment that we had made there is gone. And now we're, we're looking for guidance here before we decide, you know, are we going to pursue having another animal control officer? Are we going to stay with the lead tech? Does the shelter still open or close? Does it, heck, what does it look like? So given that this was the one that had the most red dots, you know, looking at what could we do to lower the cost and impact? And, and I'm going to say, none of these were great. These are the tough decisions we've been asked to talk about. The first of which is euthanasia policy. So we are generally a no-kill shelter. I mean, we've only, in the time that I've been here, euthanized three animals. One who was nearly dead from a fire and two who had very severe medical incidents that they weren't able to survive. And so it's the only thing to do. But that's three dogs in three years. And, you know, all of the rest of them, we've been able to network out pretty well. But unfortunately, we do have, especially within our, like, typical population, for example, we have two that we've had since September. And no amount of marketing, no amount of outreach, no amount of adopting these shirts and walking them through the neighborhood. I mean, they're very, very sweet dogs, but they've been in that shelter for nine months. And so that's taking away from staff time and resources. It's taking away from resources to be able to bring other dogs in. When we had 10, we're what we consider functionally full. We can't really accept more dogs. We have 12 kennels, but we, our capacity to care for more than 10 dogs is very, very difficult. Euthanasia, if we went to the state mandated completely minimum, that's 72 hours for a stray. And that's 14 days for a known hole when we know who the, the dog owner is. So this would dramatically lower our costs, but not completely. Just because, you know, if we do have a dog in, we have to care for. And also, in even discussing this with my staff at the shelter, absolutely none of them wants to stay out of, out of shelter where this is the policy. So maybe there's a less script option, you know, where we pick, you know, kind of more arbitrary date, you know, three months, six months, something like that. I mean, by the time we've had a dog in there for nine months, that's, that's cool to the, to the animal, to be living. Our, our facility's not up to standard. It's, it's, you know, very small pens. Our great day that we had in there for four months was, I couldn't even turn around in one of the kennels. And so those kinds of situations are pretty heartbreaking as well. So I don't recommend the euthanasia, but if that or a spectrum of options along that are possible and would help us lower our costs and burden. And then the other option is outsourcing. So we have been talking with Mason County Humane Society. They're interested in potentially operating the shelter under contract from us. In the discussions that we've had so far with them, it only looks to be saving us about $60,000 to $70,000 a year in a cost for what they would want to operate. And we would lose adoption revenue as part of that. So really, it's about, you know, $80,000 to $90,000 added to the city to, to not have that. But then we're, or sorry, $60,000 savings to this, to the city because we lose the revenue. So that being said, they can operate if we lose kind of our span of control. But it's one less thing to worry about. We do end up saving, you know, $60,000, which in grand scheme of things is very much. But also, is this one of our core services or would this be better run by an entity who, that's their sole function? And they have a broader network of volunteers, donors, fundraisers, and just a more robust program. They can provide their own veterinary services. So it saves us a little bit of the cost, approximately a third to a quarter of what we're currently paying. But it does pass that along to an entity maybe better qualified to do so. And frees up more of our internal time to focus away from that. Now, that being said, we still have, you know, policy issues to work through about surrenders and impounds and dangerous dogs. Who takes on the animal control work specifically, which is unfortunately probably the fault of a combination of police officers and our code enforcement officer. So just things to consider when we're looking at options there. But those, those were the two alternatives to complete closure that we identified. And complete closure, there's, there's no other entity in Mason County that's just going to do this for, for free. The county's not operating shelter and Humane Society's already, but it's, it's, sorry, yes.
The county is mandated to have animal control. We are not mandated to have animal control. So why aren't we calling the Sheriff's Department for these animals?
Well, we currently operate animal control. We have our own code and we have our own procedures, so we, we just do it.
But if we didn't, would the sheriffs be responsible for picking up these animals and doing anything with them?
It's not concerning, you know.
So I thought they were required.
I mean, they're not, they're not, they're not doing it in the county right now, right? Or they're doing it to Olympia instead. They're, they focused animal control, you know, service.
But they're looking at it. If they were to get it, would we still be responsible for, for picking up animals or would the county be responsible?
Want to ask the chief if how much time would closing down the shelter affect the officers?
That, that's a hard thing to quantify right now. I mean, we do respond to numerous animal calls throughout the week. So I can only imagine if you have an animal control officer in place that are calling, it certainly increases responses.
And if you're taking dogs to welfare or Olympia, that's an hour.
I don't know what's going to be available because it'll be depending on the situation.
So even if we cut the whole thing, it's just going to get shifted on to burden to another part of the city?
Yes.
Thank you.
Do you think lowering costs, adoption fees would, would help move the animals a little bit faster? I mean, I know we talked about this in the past.
Our, our, our fees for the, the harder to adopt dogs, the senior dogs or dogs with medical issues is $100. It's fairly minimal and we could consider lowering it. We have no problem adopting out smaller dogs, puppies. They go quickly. And those fees at 500 are kind of the only revenue generator that we really have at the shelter. Just because the, the puppies go really quickly before they've expended the cost. It costs about $35 per dog, per night at the shelter. And so by the time you have an older dog, a hard to adopt dog there for three, four days, we're not even getting back our, our adoption fee. We do want some sort of fee in place for adoption. Because, I mean, first of all, if somebody can't afford to pay for the adoption fee, can they afford to pay for the food and medical care? And all that other stuff that goes with it. And also, we have had a lot of pets coming in from our indigenous population into the shelter. And the last thing we would want is those pets going back out to that population and the cycle continues, so.
So it seems like if we wanted to do away with the shelter by going over to the Humane Society, but we needed to maintain animal control, we'd lose money. But if, if we kept somebody on board to actually handle that as opposed to putting it off to code enforcement and the police, who I'm sure would be happy to not be doing that, so.
So, so you're correct. It's, it doesn't save us a lot, I guess I don't like it.
I think that's a discussion about service levels as far as animal control too, right? That's next, Jay's next phase about this discussion is what is the dismissed service level of the Council for animal control in the city?
I'm, I'm going to ask the terrible question because it's on here. Like, have we looked and said, if we set a rule for euthanasia? And I definitely would not be, I, I imparted the most for it on this council based on everybody I've talked to about it. And I wouldn't be good with 72 hours. That's crazy to me. But have we actually looked at what the savings are on that? Or is it just sort of like hypothetically, there's savings there?
Well, for example, I mean, I, I looked at, we have two dogs that we've had since September. And the cost for those two dogs, including their medical care and, and, you know, the fully loaded cost is over $19,000 for two dogs that we've had for nine months. So, I, I mean, that's, that's cost in, cost in staff time, cost in medical care, cost in death bills. But it's also cost in not being able to take in our dogs. We have a waitlist for surrenders. We have, you know, these two dogs holding these stalls for nine months are holding stalls that we're not able to bring in other dogs. And so we're having to either turn people away or in one case, last year, we had one living in the bathroom because we were 13 dogs and literally could not take anymore. So, yeah, it's, it's a difficult discussion. And, you know, we tried.
How much, I'm sorry. It sounds like you're really far away, but how much money did you say those two dogs have costed since September, Director, whatever?
$19,000.
$19,000? Okay, thank you.
And, you know, depending on the dogs that we get in, I mean, the longer that we keep them, the more medical care we have to provide. You know, some dogs come in and just need their spay neuter, which is, you know, $200 or less. And some need more extensive medical care. We just signed three invoices last week for about $800 a piece. And so, you know, we're, we're not operating this out of profit. No animal shelter in the country operates on profit, except for one that is contracted with so many other people that they're making money off the contracts. But that's, that's it. Very few are, are able to, I mean, this is going to be a loss, but we just need to determine, you know, what is our, what is our threshold for that, that payment? That, you know, the, the book gets around to. And then the animal control discussion, again, goes back to internal service. Wait, it needs to be performed. Someone needs to take care of it, whether that's an animal control officer, working under animal, they have a patrol division or some police. I mean, the, the function's still there. There's still dangerous dogs, you know, entering people's yards and, you know, taking out somebody's dog. Or there's still, you may have heard about that this weekend, you know, I mean, there's still those functions that are occurring. And you just need to know, like, do we need animal control specifically? Or are we, you know, is, is that a police function? I'm not just trying to talk this, I guess, this is what I was asked it, but I have a lot of thoughts here I got to answer for, so.
And you mentioned it was a $35 per night, per dog.
That's, if, if you take our entire budget and split it by the number of kennels, by the number of dogs, by the number of, yeah, it comes out to $35 a night. So that's assuming fully loaded. Now, if we were, if we weren't fully loaded, if we had a policy where there was euthanasia and we were at half the population rate or something, it would go up incrementally per dog because now we're defraying those costs or we're, we're counting for those costs over fewer dogs. So you would expect that number to go up a little bit.
So it kind of seems like with, any, a euthanasia policy would just increase our capacity and not really save us anything?
It would reduce a lot of our medical costs because we're taking in dogs now and, and giving them life-saving medical care and keeping them alive. And we're not going to, we're not going to do that if, if we're not telling our, keeping them around. And then, sorry, this is a kind of an emotional subject for me. It probably is for everybody. Nobody wants, like, have to make these hard calls. But it, it is, I, I mean, the, the amount of money that we're spending on taking care of two dogs could have taken care of many, many more dogs during that timeframe. Or could reduce our staff hours. And we currently have one full-time dayperson, one full, one almost full-time weekend person, and another person who does nights and one day on the weekend. And so when, when you factor all of that in, like, we could reduce the hours that we're spending on coverage. If we had fewer dogs, we would reduce our veterinary bills. We would, we could reduce a lot of our costs. But it would depend, you know, how dramatically it would be an effect of how dramatic the policy was. You know, if there's one or two dogs in there, we can dramatically reduce our staffing. But if we have five or six, we, we have to basically be fully staffed.
I'd be more interested in. Dogs are there the whole time though, so it's not like those two dogs just made the whole population at any point in time. You have to have staff on duty, you have to pound. For the record, I did not put a red dot on the animal shelter. So one of y'all put two of them on there and it wasn't me. I want that to be made very clear. And I like the idea of putting it back with the Police Department. If their primary function is dealing with law enforcement issues like the dog, for instance, like you said, this weekend. I was very much, I got a whole lot of that. And this weekend was an absolute definite reason why we need animal control in the city and why it shouldn't go anywhere. The discussion about euthanizing dogs is gross. And I think the guys that you're having here in this room is just gross to begin with, and I don't like hearing about it. So I just want to make my voice clear on that. I didn't go against animal control either. I think animal control's a good thing. And I think that's something that was probably done a lot better when it was with the Police Department because they have right there better communication when you're going into a traffic stop when there's a dog acting crazy. You have, you know, you can radio them in and that sort of thing. I like the idea behind that. And they were able to sit with derelict vehicles and stuff like that. But there's got to be somebody at the pound anyway. So when you have one or you have nine, it kind of is what it is. You're feeding dogs. It's not rocket science. You know, none of those things are. You're going to let the dogs out, you got to feed them, you got to comb them, you know what I mean? None of that's rocket science. We could hire pretty much whoever to do that. And that's what we've done. But whether there's one in there or there's nine in there, it's the same job. I've been, spent a lot of years in that pound and I know a lot about it and a lot about the history of it. I don't exactly agree with everything that was said here tonight, but we're not going to get into that. What I will say is that I think we can afford to put a couple of extra dogs, a little bit of kibble. I bet if you put a call out there for some donations, they'll be there tomorrow. In fact, I'll lead the train. So, man, that's my piece.
I'd be interested in, in the outsourcing option too, the $80,000 savings. Every little bit helps and gives us a downline a little bit, but I'm one, so. It's all option one. I'm not interested in option one right now.
Same. If two is an option, then great.
I'm, I'm in line with the mayor. However, I don't want to cut anything, but that's, you know, that's not a reality. So I would like to increase what we're doing at the shelter, but we're at fiscal impasse, so. I, I have no solutions right now. I'm going to have to think about it and, and pray.
And these are only two options?
So we've, we've talked to animal services in Olympia and their quote for services came back with a three in front of it. So it can be very expensive. And they're a very high-balling killer shelter. They do the 72 and 14 under, under state laws. So they're, they're, we can pay more money for basically the, the first outcome. So it doesn't save us a lot. Well, it doesn't save us anything, it costs us.
It seems like option two is the only option we really have. I'd like to know more because it does seem like if we keep animal control functions and don't just lay that off on other staff, then we probably won't save any money and we lose power to decide about how things should work out. So I'd like to know more about that, but it seems like maybe animal shelter and control might be sticking around. They're, they're essential.
Is there any possibility that we could?
Can we, can Melissa do you real quick?
Oh, cool.
Excuse everybody. Melissa?
Yeah, I'm, I, I agree. Um, I'm, option one is an, an option for me. I, I, pretty much what Tom and Josh just said, may I ask of you?
Question? I just wonder if there's, I, I want to think outside the box. And is there some amazing fundraiser we could do everywhere? This, this town comes together. We have amazing fundraisers in this town. I once went to a chili cookup. It lasted three hours and it raised over $300,000 for a kitten that they didn't get. This town comes together. I don't know. Maybe we need to do something fantastic to offset these costs. And maybe it's not our normal this. Maybe it's something else. Maybe, I mean, a chili cookup is a little light, but I mean, wouldn't it be fun to have like a ball with the officers? And maybe the dogs are included. Maybe we do something fantastic. Maybe we start a brainstorm. Maybe we need to think bigger than that's just stuff.
Weird. I was just talking about a similar idea to that. Some people from Adopt a Pet, so we might be able to make something happen with that.
All right.
Adopt a Pet has a very good facility. They also have a lot of fundraisers, but they also allow the queefments. So when someone passes, they have their whole estate to them. And they don't, they're a no-kill shelter. They've had dogs there for years. But is there, I asked this question before, is there a way to make it easier to donate directly to the shelter? Because people will more likely give money to dogs with a chance than giving it to the general fund.
Emily, could you QR codes maybe? I don't know.
A, a, a. A donation can be designated to a service. It does have to go back to the general fund because the general fund's supported, but the donation can be designated for the service. Much like it is a park, much like it could be a street tree or something like that. It can go to the shelter and it'd be designated for the shelter and we'd be required to spend the suspension.
So I, I got my dog from Adopt a Pet 10 years ago. And if I said, oh, I want to leave in my will a percentage of my estate to the city of Shelton's animal control, that's doable? In the, can we write that into a code?
Go through probate and, and somebody would, yeah? I mean, we actually received a donation of, gosh, it's been years, about $35,000, almost $35,000 for the Huff and Love Trail. And spent that over time on maintenance and upgrades and things like that. But obviously, that was handled through, through probate. We received the donation without even knowing who was covering our way.
Same with the library down at the, $100,000.
Yes.
Lost in the interest.
Been around many, many years, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that opportunity's there. Is it advertised? I think anytime you talk about, you know, volunteer coordination, fundraising and things like that, I think most of us have been, been fundraising to, especially big ones, it takes a bunch of time to put that together, right? And so right now, we're talking about capacity issues, but our basic services and going out and connecting some fundraisers, not knowing where that's going to go. That be considered now as a nonprofit organization that facilitates that? Is it a foundation, a shelter foundation that's formed or something like that? We'd be, you know, certainly willing and happy to facilitate that partnership.
So would you like creating a Friends of the Shelter or something like that?
Sure.
Any other questions? First half.
At the end of the day, as we grow, sorry, if someone's going to jump in. At the end of the day, we have X amount of shelter space, X amount of land. And as we grow, that demand is going to increase and there's going to be capital, capital needs, capital improvements. We just put a roof on it, have an HVAC unit, but it still is a cinder block, you know, structure, small kennels. They don't have the ATMs. There's some issues about moving animals in and out, dangerous animals moving in and out, things like that. And it's, it's really constrained in its footprint. So the longer this, you know, this service remains, which sounds like that's, you know, that's the commitment, right? We have to consider some investments down the road to, to make sure that we are providing the service that meets the Council's expectations.
And we are, you know, with the comp plan numbers that we're working on, we've talked to you guys about before. That's, that's correct. We're anticipated to grow 7,900 people within the next 10, 20 years. And if that truly happens, you know, that's nearly double the size of the community, but not the facility that's still serving. And so capacity issues that we have now are, are just going to be increased.
Just for the record, the, the red dots, we had to use them and spend them without consideration of cost. So this is an exercise that was given to the council. So now that we are looking at the numbers as well, we're integrating that into our decision-making. So it's going to be tougher than the exercise we had that was without looking at the emotional cost to this. Just let people know that if this was a high red or six dots, it was because the, the task that we had to undergo was to make sure that we spent all our priority dots red. So it's not because that we're cold or heartless, it's because that was what's happening with our fiscal plan. This is like our, you know, our, our dinner table meeting about what we got to cut, you know?
I think Councilmember Gilmore said it best at the, at the retreat. It's so we can have further discussion, right? That's, so we can come back and we have this discussion, we can have more specific, more specific point discussion about the. That's, so we can come back and we have this discussion, we can have more specific, uh, more specific appointed discussion about these items. So you can understand the costs, you can understand the options and give us some more information. That's, that's exactly the, the exercise.
Right. I just wanted to let everyone know who is listening, hi mom. Um, that, you know, we're starting to act like we're cold and heartless, it's because we have to make. Real decisions about what money's coming in and what money's going out.
Alright, any other questions from her? Looks like we're interested in option two, more information.
More further refine that?
Yep.
And then there's no way we can get our friends at the county to get into an ILA and do something together and not further spread out the costs? I mean, I think that's something that we can think about of gonna try to go outside the box.
We were awaiting a proposal from the county and then. And then last Saturday they were looking at trade services, so I'm not sure where that one falls now.
The county would have other animals like horses and goats and cows that probably would not be. You know, city focused, but I mean, it's a, it's a big task that we could probably ask the county to step up and help us out here. So, uh, anyway, that's just another idea that we don't have to do it all by ourselves. We can ask the whole community.
Good. Anything on, before we move on to the animal control portion of that? Okay. Chief, I think you've got the next one. You're running through with SRO.
Yeah, um, so we currently don't have an SRO. A few years now, that's, that's specifically due to staffing, our staffing levels and we're unable to provide that position to the school. Historically, we always had a school resource, resource officer. I was one, and sometimes you have two and sometimes like three. Um, they would divide the news up between each school. Um, primarily they would respond to any incidents at the school, we're there, they have facilities on. With the kids and develop those relationships was also nice. They became, became familiar with the officers and they were, you know, were. We're just in a, in a good spot where we could have good relations with, with the children, fellow students and, you know, foster those. That helps in, in their lives in the future. So they recognize us as friends and not enemies. Also a big perk was if there was ever a major incident at the school, we already had an officer right there ready to go. So without a school resource officer, we can lose those, those attributes of that position. Also internally, we don't have, um, it's not a big department. I, you know, I have officers that wanna do lots of things and go lots of places and everything like that. And they, unfortunately, my apartment, the shelter is primarily me. The availability for alternate positions or opportunities is limited. So. That's just kinda one more thing that we don't get to have our officers experience or be involved in. I mean, lastly though, um, the county is developing a new DARE program, um, so revitalizing that. They can catch up on board with that and use the, they're ready with the school students and that. So, um, that's, that's always an option. Paying some, some resource officer.
In the, in the past, the resource officer was paid by the school, correct?
Seventy-five percent from the school and twenty-five percent from the city. Had a meeting with some school representatives last week and. Due to their military constraints right now, they're only able to, like, five percent.
Five percent?
Five percent.
Oh.
So it wasn't very advantageous for us to.
Yeah, I, that was a large contribution, I hope. That's in the cards right now.
That was along with the cops grant too.
Yeah.
And so, but that's what we're, that's what we're asking.
I love the SRO programs, but if we can't afford it and, you know, obviously. And especially if they're not willing to foot the bill there, that, it just makes it hard to. To do all that. We have to take care of the, the people in the community.
Yeah, that's why I put a red dot on it. It's not that I'm opposed to the, the SRO. I think it's, it's a great program, but with. The school district not having the availability to basically pay for it and dedicating a full. FTE, that it seems like we've had a hard enough time just filling the roles that we need on the street. So that matters, man.
Yeah, I think we're losing an opportunity not only to have better relations with the youth, but also in recruitment. For the, for the, for officers. Um, but just like the other member said, like, we hadn't had one in a while. So when it became apparent that it would cost us more money than. The split that we had before, that that became an easier choice to utilize one of our red dots there. So. George?
Yeah, I agree. Like you said, it was an unfunded program already. That's really why we didn't, you know, weren't looking to go back after it. And, uh, yeah.
Melissa?
Um, I would honestly love to spread, figure out a way to, um, bring that back. I lost sound for a minute. What did you say the percentage was at with the school districts or what the latest was on that?
Five percent.
They were willing to donate five percent.
Five? That's what I thought I heard. Okay. Oh, wow. Um, I think something to consider is. I, I think if we had an SRO back in the schools, I think down the road, long term, um. I think there'd probably be, I don't know what I wanna say, less issues, but, um. Kids having that connection and having an SRO in the schools, um, I, I think at some point we would also see some sort of financial benefit from it. Um. Uh, directing kids and, um, you know, having those relationships and maybe they, some of them wouldn't get in as much trouble. I know a lot of teenage kids who, um, you know, have a lot of respect for a couple of the officers here in town who have told, you know, the kids have told me. That would be great if, if they were in the schools, um, and how helpful they think it would be. So, I mean, I get it, if five percent is. That's nothing awful, but, um. At the same time, I think we need to consider the long-term benefits that it might, um, bring around also.
If, if it comes to a point where we, we have that true and if we can afford it or they can afford it, I think yes, we will. We should definitely look at it again at that point. This isn't a forever, you know, this isn't set in stone.
Right.
Right. Yeah.
Yeah, I think the relationship with the kids was probably the biggest benefit that we've had. Um, so my kids were in school during the SRO days and. And, uh, I think that's, that was a great benefit, but obviously it's not in the cards. Maybe we could, you know, an officer grown busy. Maybe once a month they can go up and have, go to assembly or something and hang out.
I think we have officers who go to special events at schools. We're doing, we're doing one in a couple of weeks, the micro wheel will be thrown on Saturday. Um, you know, spending some time with the, the students and just have those opportunities.
Yep. That's great. Well, looks like, uh, at this point in time, that's interesting.
Nothing's changed though.
Yeah.
A little discussion about your Jake.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll move on to museum operations. Um, as you know, the city owns the building and the parcel where the Mace County Circle Society operates the museum. Right down here at Fifth and Railroad. Our cost this year, um, to provide maintenance and service there is sixty-seven thousand dollars. Knowing that we have a fifty thousand dollar investment in refund for HVAC replacements. So without that, the operational cost of about seventeen thousand dollars. Um, we have an agreement with Mace County Circle Society through the end of twenty-twenty-six. Um, for lease essentially of the building. And I have an upcoming meeting with, um, the ZAR body executive director of the Circle Society to have further discussions on. I mean, what their long-term intentions are, um, if they have the ability to take, uh, take on a larger role or even ownership of the facility in the future.
I'd love to see, you think, great, but, um, I, I wonder if they have opportunities for. Um, grants maybe that, that they could look at and different things above the awful we can do for them to say.
I have, I think that, uh, when the lease comes up, we should give them the building for free with deed restriction that it needs to be. A museum or give it back to the city at a future date, or even if somebody else wanted to run the museum after them. That is, that it's always an asset, museum asset of some kind. But yeah, give them, give them the building and much, uh, the mayor said, they can go out and raise a little bit more for a little bit of that. Maybe our LTAC will get a hotel, another hotel in town where we'll have a little bit more money because you donate to their, to their operations down the road. Hopefully not come to work, we'll get maybe some hotels here. And that would help support their operations a different way. Um, but yeah, I think we should give them the building as soon as we can. But deed restrictions, so it can't be sold.
I like the museum.
Yeah.
Seventeen thousand dollars, but then again, you know, with the maintenance and the HVAC, which hopefully, it sounds like that one's been there for. Time immemorial and hopefully this one will last that long as, as well. But yeah. It is a liability to keep it around, but at seventeen thousand dollars, it's not solving anybody's problems by. But if we can give them the building, if we could do something like that and not endanger their operation, that would be.
I figured much like the rest of our facilities, the animal shelter and other facilities we've been talking about tonight, there's gonna be ongoing. Capital investment needs, especially a building built in the early nineteen hundreds. Um, you know, it's a downed sort of register, so that means it's a little more expensive to do some of that work as well. All the wood, there's some decay, um, you know, all the dental work and the fine detail work is all wood and. Over a hundred years or so, um, that starts, starts degrading to a point where it just becomes more expensive to, to replace.
And less assets would be less insurance liability, correct?
It would reduce insurance.
It's like a classic car. I mean, it's labor intensive and expensive, but. Is it worth it to have around and keep our history alive? And I don't, I don't know if we have a return on investment to quantify that. Um, but I think there, we're losing a lot of our history. We lost pancake breakfast thing, the turn, a big machine turnaround thing. Um, that the Kiwanis did and, uh. So, I mean, it's another piece of our history that I, um, I'm sad that we dedicated our red dots there. Um, but, uh, how do we, how do we show a return on investment? Is this something the chamber could, could do to pump up their stats and pump up their recruitment and bring in more folks to come visit? But, um. Like I said, it's, it's a, it's a labor of love right now and it's, it's, it's a little bit more costly than we can afford. Um, I like the, the idea that the mayor brought up, that if we could pass it on and have them. Maybe in, or, and Councilmember Sherman, if we could pass it on and they get, can get more grants, because now that they have their own building. I don't know what they could leverage that, but, um. Seeing that we have to cut X amount of million dollars, um, that this was something that, um. And knowing that the maintenance for it will increase in the future, not decrease. It, it became, um, apparent that that was something that, um, we, we would have to let go if we wanted to make significant. But this is even not being cut, so.
Well, again, just sorry to interrupt you, this seventeen thousand dollars isn't providing any preventative maintenance activity, right? So we are seeing some degradation in the facility. If you, if you truly maintain the facility the way it should be. That's gonna be four or five times the budget annually to make sure that we're, we're maintaining it to, to the ability to. Ensure the structures here long-term.
And I think that the LTAC board next year or the year after that could, could look at this as more of a priority than some of the other things we're funding with LTAC dollars. So maybe that could help offset their utilities and some of the stuff too, you know, get out to the boards.
If you don't mind me being blunt tonight.
Go ahead.
We're facing about six hundred thousand dollar cap for twenty-twenty-six and, and thinking about LTAC funds and maybe a hotel and stuff. Isn't giving us the feedback we need right now. I'm sorry. Um, I really, I know these are tough decisions, um, but.
Well, the, well, the feedback was that, my feedback was just to give them, give them the.
I understand, yeah, yeah.
And I'm saying. Down the road, here's some options. So the feedback is, I.
Yeah, and, and, and those would be their options, I, I guess, right? Okay, you know, I guess that's what, I need clarification. If you want us to work on, on that with them or if that's option two.
No, that is an option down the road to keep them, keep them, keep them running, but my, my is like, hey, we won't, if we can't afford it, we can't afford it.
My concern, if we, if we wanna maintain all these services that are the lowest priorities through the, through the, or maintain a. High level of these services that are part of the retreat, we're gonna develop, staff is gonna bring back a budget that may not meet your goals and objectives. And it takes us long to get that done for you, right? We're, we're in a pretty, pretty good schedule right now, addressing this right now in June, the second week of June. That starts really rapidly. Time starts rapidly ticking away by the time we have to get this budget done for you in November, especially with reduced staff in our finance department. So, um, that's kinda why I'm, you know, I guess encouraging a little more, um, feedback and correction on, on some of these service levels.
But the unfortunate part about that, it's pragmatically, if we wanna cut six hundred thousand dollars largely out of these, it's basically the.
Everything.
Yeah.
What would the building sell for if we just outright sold it? Would it be in the six figures?
Sure.
I mean, I was saying, it's like, if we wanna just make every decision based on dollars and cents. Then why don't we just close it down and sell the building and then we get really close to closing that budget cap? I'm just.
Yeah.
I'm.
But I'm not saying that, appreciate that.
I'm not saying that's what we're gonna do, but I'm saying if we're gonna make these choices based purely on economics, then. Um, we have to put that on the table and say, do we have the, do we have the intestinal fortitude to do this? That's all.
I'll, um, again, being with Liz this week and gauge your interest in what, you know, I think that they've been thinking about this. I think, I know they've been thinking about this anyway, so I'd be interested to see what, uh, what the information is from the board of Mace County Circle Society. Alright, Jay Harris, you wanna touch bases on the homeless camp checkups plans?
Yeah, so, uh, Public Works Street's brought around every day doing all sorts of things, uh. That, uh, with the homeless camp slash checks cleanup, um, garbage and graffiti. And calls that we get, uh, just abandoned things. Um, so we, in our time card system, we didn't have a budget for it in twenty-twenty-five. But, uh, the city manager in our time card dropped down, put homeless, you know, ac- activity, things that we're doing. Uh, to keep the city pretty, especially downtown, right? So, um, anyways, uh, that has added up, uh, so far year to date, fifteen thousand dollars. Um, some of that has been going in and cleaning up some camps and taking out, going in with people and pickups and that sort of thing. Um, the Teresa Johnson Trail, was that, I think that might have been last year was.
Yeah.
It was last year, but that would be an example where there was a lot of things down below and the only thing we do is roll them out, right? We got up above, got them up the slope, um, that sort of thing. So homeless have an impact on our community. And, uh, the workforce to clean these things up is in the Public Works, uh, Street Department. So, um, that, I mean, we might do, like, next year is actually budget an amount and try to stay within that budget. Rather than just saying, hey, we need you, we need you, we need you, get it on your time card, you know, and it expands out. Um, the city manager actually had youth budgeted something for homeless camps, I can't remember what that was, just in total.
Yeah, city manager budget, yeah.
Yeah.
So that's six thousand foot, foot towards for, um, for dump fees and portable sand cans.
Yeah, so you can see the impact is large. Um, and so that's one of those service levels where you could do nothing, right? But, uh, it does, somebody will need to be doing some of these things to keep mostly the downtown, uh, cleaned up. So, uh, decision point, how many talks did that get?
Some of our, some of our water property, no, not water properties, but some of our general fund properties that are off of the main right of ways. You know, attract, attract some of this activity. you know, track, the tracks some of us actively do, so we have to, we have to move into some of these. A lot of them run by the water department, so the utility will absorb these, but we're trying to track these the best we can.
So every Monday we walk every property and to, and report to code enforcement what's going on, who's in there, you know, is there any garbage, that sort of thing, and try to stay on it on a weekly basis. And so that's part of this cost too, is guys walking the Teresa Johnson Trail, see what's going on up there. You know, going up the Navy River tracks to some property we own up there, see what's going on on our site. There's, there's activity on sites next door, that sort of thing. So we're trying to keep an handle on it, because if you don't monitor the sites, it could get bad quickly. And we, we found that out, you know, the hard way, but a few years ago, that we had gone and really cleaned up a site and it took a significant amount of time. And it's easier to monitor it and try to, you know, discourage the activity and keep it cleaned up than it is to let the activity occur and to incur very large costs to remove a lot of items later. So it's more proactive.
So if we just get a quote for like ninety-four thousand dollars for the cleanup over there across the, yeah, quote.
Yeah.
That's a big one.
Yep.
And that's not.
It, it is not, it wasn't much, it hasn't, haven't authorized any.
Right.
Hasn't brought it to council for, for any equipment. I'm hoping that we hear back from the Navy for access to the tracks to reduce that cost. If we brought it forward, but I still haven't heard back from contacts there.
And I feel like it's likely to happen. So it's not fair to our waterways.
I don't think the cost is going to get any, any better. I think it's probably going to increase because we're, people are going to leave and depart here in about ten days and going back up the trails and back up the tracks and wherever else in the woods they can find. So we're going to be going further to clean up here shortly, so I, I don't think that it's going to decrease. I mean, I, I shouldn't even be an option because we're get, we gotta clean, we gotta clean, keep these clean, I mean, the best we can. So I don't know if that's even an option. Might be, still gotta, still gotta do it, still gotta just garbage scans, no matter where they are, still gotta go. And stuff on the trails, so. Wait for somebody else.
What's there to say, it's a service that's kind of the fundamental service of running a city, I think, is, you know, regardless of how we want to label it, this is about keeping things clean. And I think that is the most basic level of expectation we have from the people who live here. So I don't see any way around this one, unfortunately.
I think in the development of the budget, you know, the city manager and I and other public works staff try to get our arms and, and the police department around the problem a little more and identify the cost. We have enough history and data that it should, we should maybe have a line item that is a little higher, that's more budgeted. It would be a little more proactive is what I'm saying now. So I mean, the total, the cost at the end of the year, being proactive rather than reactive will actually decrease cost over time. Does that make sense, right? So like maintaining a roof on your house or anything. So I think we need to quantify that cost and, and try to get a better handle on it. You know, and not clean up every bottle cap and all of that, depending on where you're at. Do a good job and, and keep it up to pace and, and get that in the budget for you guys to review.
Yeah, if it's not like water department property, can we use the water fund for, for those cleanups instead of general fund dollars?
Typically it's on the, the water utility, yeah. It's not the best use of the funds in that water utility, but.
General fund's the big problem.
There's a potential, there's potential surplus in some of these properties too and taking them off of public ownership. So we alleviate some of those issues and not to maintain them, it's insurance, it's an insurance burden at the same time, so.
Doing some of the pieces that are culpable.
Yeah, doing some, doing some more intensive review of the properties that we're holding and if there's any long-term means for these and then, and then surplusing those out, putting up for sale and put them back on the tax walls too.
I think we did a, didn't we do a city asset, I think a couple of years ago when Jeff was here.
We've got a map of some properties that prioritize, you know, some of our properties, like the ones out halfway through your sign, others, not marketable.
Yeah.
Exactly, right, you can't access that, the slopes, there's no access, you have a Navy railway running through the middle of it. You know, a, a property just to the west sold a couple of months ago for five thousand dollars, right? And that was one of the private property owners that had a couple of encampments on it and they're absentee owners and then, you know, it actually costs us, you know, costs us a lot of money demands essentially for those absentee owners where they're not managing themselves.
One of the weaknesses in the process when we did this was when we break it down individually by one item at a time, we're not looking at the web or the fabric. If we pull that fabric, it's going to mess up everything, the whole, the whole cloth. This is one of those areas. But for example, when Jake talked about how if we don't have the animal shelter, then it falls on, on the police force. So that's, you pull that thread, but you mess up, you know, the pattern that we have for the whole city. So this is one of those areas where it, there's a big web of things that connect to each other that if we don't act here, then it's going to cost us more overall for the whole city. So I want us to think about that when we also go through this process, is what does it also affect? What are other things that, that cutting this will affect the whole web, what we do in the city? And we take for granted how much, how interrelated we are, how high the cost is on, and how much staff time. And if someone doesn't pull their weight over there, then it goes, floods the zone for someone else. So I think that we need to keep that in mind as, as the council members here, that what we do for, to one section is going to affect three or four other sections if we don't do this kind of properly. So just, just to put it out there.
I think to expand on that, there's, there's a public expectation too for services that we're providing, right? So regardless of whether we fund it or not, or whether we have the people to perform that function, there's still maybe an expectation of the public, it just take, you know, take animal control, for instance. If it's not funded, the expectation of the public is if there's a dangerous dog, if there's a dog loose in the community, that the city is going to provide that service. So we need to be able to communicate to the public what that level of service may be once we're through this budget process.
We can talk about insurance or liability about not doing things, so that's a whole nother issue. So when we make these cuts, we need to decide whatever the short-term and long-term possibilities that happen here.
Yeah.
So, and like I said, if I had my brothers, we wouldn't cut anything and add more people, but that's unrealistic, so. Let's move on, move forward.
Melissa, you have anything?
No, sorry, I'm at my house. I, I don't have anything to add right now.
Thank you.
Uh, George, do you have any?
I think if you're, if you're looking at the estimate that, that the estimate that we already got is plus year to date right now, and then you're going to double that because we're in June, I mean, we're between a hundred and thirty, twenty, a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. You know, but it's a year, that's a lot. Now hopefully, like you said, we'll be up enough on it that it won't, won't be that hard next time, right? Like maintaining, you clean your house really good and you keep up with this, not so bad. But yeah, that's, that's a shock, right?
It's absolutely the goal is to be more proactive than we have.
Yes, definitely.
Okay, you want to move on to library?
Yep.
Okay. So the city offers, provides the library through the interlocal agreement, general regional library. It's a standard agreement they have with, with municipalities. They, by RCW, Timberland Regional Library District is authorized to provide library services within rural areas, not in, not in municipalities. Yet through a twenty-ten ballot measure, I think? Two thousand nine, two thousand ten ballot measure, and it's the City of Shelton in the Timberland Regional Library District. So they, they levy a property tax for their operations. Prior to that, the city paid for operations for the library as well, as well as provided elaborate structure and facility out of the general fund. Right now, our budget is just over four hundred thousand dollars. They're open seven days a week, we provide a custodian there essentially every day, as well as maintain the facility and provide utility services. There's, in addition, we have some HVAC repairs that are budgeted for this year. And more to come essentially. And we have all of the buildings in good shape, it's got a new, a new roof that's just a few years old, a new paint job, a couple of years old. The deck was just repaired, new waterproof membrane, new railings at, that, that is complete. And then the library district did a refresh on the inside a couple of years ago, some paint on the walls and the flooring. And the children's structure below, and we did the, the colored restrooms upstairs. So you'll see over in column M, about a hundred and thirty to two thousand dollars a year for insurance on the facility. I had a meeting earlier today with Cheryl Haywood, the executive director of Timberland Regional Library. Just told her we're having this conversation and had more for her later. Expressed the same budgetary constraints from them as what many municipalities are seeing. They're levying, I think, twenty-two cents per thousand. They've done from over three hundred employees, I think three hundred and ten employees several years ago, about two hundred and sixty employees. Now have regional librarians, they're librarians in each of their buildings. So they're, they're facing some of the same, some of the same issues that we are and trying to navigate through that. So I didn't, didn't get into too many more details, you know, because I wanted input from the council on what kind of conversations you'd like me to have further with the Timberland Regional Library staff.
Is it possible, like what the mayor had mentioned with touring with the museum? Letting them take ownership of their building, therefore we're no longer in charge of maintenance and insurance and the same as if they were to sell it, then it goes back to the city, is that an option?
I don't think it's a viable option with discussion, just because taking on maintenance and operation of facility without having that budgeted, and it's a five, it's a five county district. And so they have municipal libraries throughout that district. And so that might be, if they set that precedent here, that might be the request there. Certainly the budget doesn't, doesn't allow for that. So I don't think that would be their first choice, there might be an option in there though. And if we're persuasive enough for them to agree, then who knows? But just the twenty minute conversation I had with her today, I think she would feel like that was a viable option for them.
I, I, I definitely think we need a library, I definitely think that they can clean their own bathrooms. We're trying to figure out how to clean our bathrooms. I think the library can clean their own, we're paying their water, the power, the insurance on the building, liability insurance. I mean, I think that is good faith, that is being good partners with the library and keeping the service. I think us cleaning their bathrooms is a little bit over the top. I've leased buildings, I hope it's to come and clean my bathrooms, but I, I think that at least that would save us what, a, you know, full FTE, eighty grand, ninety grand.
Well, that's hard to say because again, if you cut that FTE, you've got no backup for the existing. We did that back in twenty-three and through twenty-four, you had one custodian, so we're back filling that with maintenance workers. It's not changing light bulbs and ballast and waxing floors and so, yeah, that's potential. But as Councilman Goodyear says, there's that, you pulling that thread out of the sweater and kind of could unravel a bit. You know, vacations are tough to cover. All of those, all those operations.
But we have more work here in the civic center that's.
Certainly.
That's not getting addressed. I mean, we're hired out to strip the floor, we probably could have done that if we had that, our own person for that. They weren't cleaning the library bathroom.
Yeah, what I'm saying is you can't really, if you cut that custodian and make that savings without FTE, we still have the, the work to do here and that's trickling down. You're not, if you're doing more work here, you're not cutting that FTE, right?
Oh, so you're saying that we wouldn't save you money?
I mean, unless you cut the FTE, and you would be saving money, but you're deferring maintenance, you're impacting other services, yes, so. Right, it's that thread you're pulling on.
Okay.
And it can happen, I mean, we, we did it in July one twenty-three and worked through twenty-four. And, you know, we worked through it, but again, the floor looked like it did three weeks ago. Partly because of that, it didn't receive some of, some of the maintenance that, that it needed. So you just have to prioritize, that wasn't a safety issue, right? The floor looked bad, it wasn't a trip hazard, you know, it wasn't an issue that created a liability. Address liabilities first and foremost, and then if you've got time and resources, you put it towards some of the things that, that you want, if you will want to do, grab much you need to do.
Other than police and emergency services, the one thing that I do not want to cut, in fact, I want to increase, is the library. Not only is it a source for low-cost family entertainment, you can bring your child or young ones there, you don't have to buy anything off Amazon, you know, you can borrow a book. You, there are a lot of other services there, there are movies, there are places to go when, you know, frankly, some folks send their kids there for babysitting, because there's staff there and they just read a book and then they get picked up later. I know I did that when I was younger at our local library when I was growing up. And it's, it's a safe place to be, it's open seven days a week. The bathrooms are affected by the closure of both the shelter and the park being, folks being moved from there. So the library is a community service that I do not want to cut, in fact, I want to increase the services that they get. And we should make, the library is a source of pride, the library is a source of something that we are doing well. Have you been in there lately? It's beautiful, it's air-conditioned, you can expand not only your time and your family time, but also your own personal mind and, and, and actually stop and think and not be so rushed about the world. And it's one way we can fight against the technology zombies that we're, we're raising nowadays is the library. And if you haven't been there, go in there, get your library card and see all the benefits that you can get from the library. You get free photocopy services, they have backpacks that you can check out and go on hikes. It's just a wonderful service that is really civic pride. If you're really proud about being a Sheltonian, go check out our library and how beautiful it is and how well-maintained it is and how welcoming it is and how, how great the employees are there, helping you find out whatever question you might have about anything in the world, it's the library. So I, I would, I will expend all my energy and efforts to make sure that the library does not get cut in any way. And then if we find any kind of money that we increase library services, that's my piece, thank you.
Well, we wouldn't necessarily increase library services, we don't offer the library services, they offer their own services, we.
Well, we, we're out there more often, I don't know.
We paid, well, let me, let me just finish, we, we paid insurance, we paid the, the light bill, we paid the water bill. You know, we maintained the property, we don't offer the service, library offers the service, that's their job. Their junior taxing district, they get their own tax dollars to operate their, their thing. So, you know, we're a partner in that with all of what we're offering. And all I'm saying, saying is, you know, they can clean their own bathrooms, that's all I'm saying. We need the service, I agree with you one hundred percent, it's definitely an asset to the city and to the kids in our city. We're a low-income city and we, we need it. But I'm just saying that, you know, there's, that's just one, that was just one thing I was thinking that could save, could save a little bit, so. But no, I, I agree with you, it is an asset, but we, we don't expand the service. I mean, that's, that's their, that's their thing, that's their business, they're the lead C of our building, really. With a great lease, by the way, but yes.
If we're talking numbers though, and you're looking at the twenty twenty-six fiscal impact as we are, other than IT, and it's our bigger six minutes we're on here.
Yeah, let me tell you, my daughter likes the library too, but unfortunately something we're going to have to cut. And that seems like a whole lot of money right there to be put into taking care of that building there. I think the library should be able to fund itself as a junior taxing district and we need to have a conversation with them about how they can do that and get us out of the four hundred thousand dollars a year in the library business.
The one thing that was brought up today is that there'd be. The one thing that was brought up today is that there'd be local interest with the levy lift lift, so they couldn't take that off. They obviously have to run that in all five counties and there's 200 in some taxing districts within, within their district. So there's, there's a lot of impact, right? If they, if they really raise their levy rate, it could impact junior taxing districts, like the metropolitan districts and cemetery districts. And I forget who's, who's the library. So that's one thing Cheryl told me today is, you know, that's a consideration. There's other rural, I think it's Fort Vancouver Library District, she said. Down the Vancouver area is running a levy lift lift August 5th. And they're facing significant cuts if, if that doesn't happen. You know, there's a lot at play when you talk about five different counties where this district is encompassing considering the lift lift throughout that.
That's another issue is if we do not fund this at the current levels and we pull this out, this thread, then the other libraries in the whole region will have a precedent to not fund their libraries. Then we'd lose all the libraries. So that's a real concern for me.
I think one of the big problems with this one, I would love to see them take this on themselves. A levy lift lift for them is something I personally would support, but I, I'd love to take this off of our books. But right now, we, our taxpayers are paying for a library through their property taxes. And if, if we give the library a reason to leave, they're still serving our community and we're still paying for it, whether we have a library or not. We'll save $132,000 a year, you know, right? That's what we are. You know, plus the maintenance if they were to leave, if we gave them no choice but to leave, which is kind of what it sounds like you're saying. If we say, well, you have to take on the building, you have to take on the insurance, you have to take on all of these things. Like was just being mentioned, other jurisdictions will do the same. And we gotta cut something and I get it, but this is actually value for money because people are paying for a service they will no longer get and still pay for it. If we lose the library. We talked about a lot of the things on this list. I like the museum, but people won't be paying for it if we stop having it. If we stop having animal control, people will pay for it in a different way. But they want to be paying taxes into that service the same way that they are paying into the library now. It's, I don't see a benefit in forcing people to pay for something that they no longer get. So we need to keep the library here so people get what they're paying for.
Well, it says right here, in options and alternatives, moves the online library digital services. My daughter uses a lot of that online digital services and that's the really big option here that they push at the school too. So, I mean, you just don't have a physical building. You still have a library. You can still get all that stuff delivered to your house.
That's part of the disconnection I was talking about with technology. Like we're heavily on technology and not about the human experience anymore. And the library is a place to have that human experience.
Melissa, you have anything on this?
How many hours a week, Mark, do you think we're doing custodial work at the library?
Forty.
About forty a week?
It's essentially an FTE to do custodial work in that, in that building. Because they're open seven days a week and it's very well-used. So, yep. And I think it's, sort of finished, it's.
Pretty big.
Thirty thousand.
Is it that big? Wow.
Between downstairs and upstairs, yeah.
So really quick, I think there's a misconception on the $405,000. That is because of the improvements we're doing this year.
Part of it, yes.
Until Tom said it, I heard it out loud. It's really the $132 a year.
Yeah, but that's still the biggest, other than IT all the way across the board.
Correct. And then without that, does that include the FTE, the $132?
No.
No, okay.
No, I don't.
So this is just utilities?
I'm not sure where, where you got the $132, sorry.
Insurance?
Because the $132 is the insurance.
Oh.
I mean, I think, I think he might, might be talking about maintaining the building. You know, if library services go to digital, but the city still has the building.
Can we, can we get the, what it actually costs us for the utilities and?
Well, yeah, the, the budget.
Because the budget's $19? Was, well, it says 405, but that's minus the, these big improvements that we did this year, right?
Well, that's reed though. The repairs are at a reed.
Okay.
And the, well, sorry, the deck repair and the HVAC combined were at a reed. You know, the grant was $70,000 for that. But Timmerfield Regional Library also contributed $23,000 to that project. And we used library endowment funds as well as refunds to complete the project. But yes, I will get.
It says there, yeah, $132,000 for insurance, professional services. So that would, professional services would include the cleaning, no?
No, professional services might be anything we contract out, like HVAC repairs. Carpet cleaning, if that's the case, you know, any, anything we had to contract with outside services. Our, our custodial services are, are combined within a facility's budget overall for the entire city.
Recording stopped.
Let's go home.
Did that stuck on Zoom or on?
I'm still here. That was weird.
There you go. I'm gonna go back to recorder.
Okay.
So are we at, we need more information on the, on the?
Yeah, let me get this back going.
I thought you were back.
Recording, I'm sorry. Okay, okay. Send request to you, Donna. Excuse me. Change it half a thing. Oh, is that way? That's probably right. Oh, you know what? I'm sorry. Power outage on that top. I'll steal that one. I blame it on my heavens. Want to recess it for a second? Mr. Mayor, you want to recess this for a minute?
Oh, yeah.
Let everybody stretch their lines.
Five minute break.
Why not? I did, I did that on purpose.
It's $400,000 in the general fund that goes to streets. $330,000 that we can get back by asking people to pay for it. It's, it's different services because it could be street sweeping. It could be this homeless response. We've got the other homeless response down here, which we just passed along. So that's now the police and it's not discretionary. So that's, that's what I think. That's what I'm gonna bring up when we come back. It's just that ask the voters to pay for streets. We're already doing it. We need to do it twice. We need to ask for the point three.
Well, we can do that, but we need to get the church access first.
Yeah, we do.
No, we can, around November.
That's what we need to do and we need to pay less for streets if they don't approve it.
Oh, absolutely. I mean, we know it's gonna be less. It's gonna be $700,000 a year.
Oh, no, I mean, I mean.
Don't they ask for the point three?
Yeah, we need, yeah. And that's what we need to do. We need to ask for the point three. It's because we're not going to agree on $600,000 of cuts. There's not even $600,000 worth of cuts to do here. I disagree with it, but it's true. The library is the only discretionary item that we could cut. But then people are paying taxes for our services and online library is not a service.
No, I agree the library's not, but this $405,000 was, was, is a mis, it's, should be here. What should be here is the $132 plus FTE, the power, water power insurance and the employee.
And they should be there, water power. Why are we doing that? I'm guessing it's part of the ILA, but I'm, I'm fine.
How about some coffee at 7:30?
Coffee?
I wish.
I can't drink coffee this late. I go, I'm, I'm usually on a Manhattan or an Old Fashioned. Geez.
Is the microphone on?
They know where to find me after a meeting.
That should just be, that should just be part of the process.
The Manhattan or the Old Fashioned?
Should be set up. Use that table properly.
Yeah.
Come in, get the cocktail of your choice and then sit down and come up with an answer.
I know you should bottle the water.
What was that?
Firehose, colored firehose.
Wolfman wanted us to make a record and.
Oh, yeah.
Wanted us to monetize our YouTube channel with the town song. I actually made one with, on some map I did.
Put it in glass. Three bucks a bottle. Shuttered firehose.
IT. I don't, it's, I don't know how that can be on the list. We can't cut IT. You gotta have 24 hours.
Well, we have IT and we have the third-party.
Yep.
Yeah. Can't we diminish the, the police probably need 24-hour services on.
Melissa, are you back with us?
A bunch of the library questions being answered right now.
I don't, yeah, it doesn't have enough.
Did we lose, did we lose Melissa?
No, because it's in facilities. I was gonna look down the parallels. I thought I had a report, I'll put it closed out on.
Yeah, here we go. So.
Oh, there you go.
So you're asking me not to bring up more, more transportation money today? I mean, it's my best.
Well, no, I, I, I agree, but just get August first, get through August. November, there you go.
I think it has to wait till February at that point. Which is fine.
Are you ready, Mark?
Yeah.
All right. Welcome back. All right. So I was gonna say that looks like we're looking for more information on the actual, the actual dollars are without the improvements that we're doing this year, which looks like it's $132 plus the FTE, but is that what we're, we're going with this?
I've got, so existing budget this year for libraries, 405 without custodial services.
Correct. And that's with the repairs, the HVAC.
Correct, so. Yeah, office operating is 15,490. We've got, oh, sorry, not library. Insurance is $19,734 annually. Professional service is 64. Utility service is $31,490.
And utilities are part of their standard ILA, so they expect everybody to do that.
Until the end of '26, right?
No, this is, this, this is basically a, this is, this agreement's been in place for a number of years and just reused continuously. The, the museums could be in '26.
Okay. So maybe this conversation would be about utilities. You know, obviously we have to keep the insurance up here on the building. So maybe the discussion would be the FTE and the, and the utilities. I mean, and, you know, if they have to do a little lift lift to do that, then maybe they can do that, so. And then, yeah, and then basically if this insurance we're paying for.
As long as the building belongs to us, though, we have to be managed, so it doesn't.
No, I, no, I, I agree. Big maintenance, yes, yeah.
Fun feeling, otherwise.
We have to maintain our assets, right? So realize it's gonna cost us a lot more in the future, yeah.
But as Mark just said, we just, new paint, new roof, new deck, new inside. So it's probably good for 10 years until we build, until we build Shelton Hills out and get a couple Costco's in here, you know?
Couple of them.
Hey, think big.
Can I settle for a windmill?
I've never been to a windmill.
You're missing out, buddy.
Is that, is that enough, Mark, or do you need more?
Yeah, well, I'll have some more discussions and we'll bring it back.
Okay. And do we have Melissa back yet?
She's been there all along.
Yeah, I'm here.
Oh, okay. Called her later. Do you have anything before we move on?
Uh, no, I'm, I'm good on that with a little more, some more info coming, yeah.
All right.
Ready to.
Thank you.
So I'll speak to courts a little bit. As you know, courts separate from government. They're managed, a lot of what they do is managed through the office administration courts at the state level. So they have to ask for the hours they will operate, have approval through the court. So essentially what, how, how this functions or how the council functions and the approval of the budget, the approval budget would determine where they would expend the services. If they have the ability to reduce staff based on suggested reduction, whether it, it changes their operations and the community service, you know, function or something like that, that's, that's something that they would determine, the judge would determine how that would be incorporated in the 2026 budget.
Would this be a proper discussion where kind of the idea I've mentioned to you the last couple of days? Or is that something we wanna just talk back up the road?
I'm open to any discussion.
So I, I mean, I love our court system. We've got a great operation here. But we're, we, we cannot have a court system in our court. We can actually contract with the county district court and they can actually run it. We're spending about $700,000 a year right now on a court plus public defender and prosecutor. Maybe, maybe we can pay the county $300,000 or $400,000 and save $700,000 a year. I, I mean, it's really a big option. It's a lot of money. It's like huge savings. And I'm probably gonna be like, hey, now for what you're saying. You know, I, I think it's, I think it's really an option for us to look at closely and see if we can maybe work out a deal with the county district court and we save, save half the money at least, half or more, so.
Well, there was no dollar amount on you, so.
It's because it's not part of this discussion. It's something that I talked to Judge about, a different judge. And I mentioned to Mark and, you know, he could do some research on it, but.
It's, you know, I wouldn't, I don't know if it's a common practice, but as a practice, you'll see that City Olympia just entered into a contract with Thurston County for some court services. They also provide some court services for Tumwater and Lacy. Now, is that economy a scale that they can perform those functions? Potentially, but it's not, it's not a foreign concept by any means.
Well, if we do that, then why don't we just contract the police force to the sheriff's department? Because I mean, but we need to have justice locally. We need to have, we need to have local, in the city jurisdiction. We need to have a sub and PD. We need to have a Shelton Court. That's, and I'm not gonna budge on that.
Well, I think PD and a court are two huge, two huge different things. And actually, I think it would probably cost more to outsource a police department, so. I, it's just a thought. It's just a thought. It's, it's district court.
It doesn't happen overnight.
I think those discussions are long-term. You obviously have a, a court system that struggles, particularly in rural area. With public defense attorneys, potentially, you know, it's a load on prosecutors. Um, with public defense attorneys, um, potentially, you know, it's a load on prosecution, um. There's a lot of moving parts that would need to be worked out in the, which is court space and, and any of the administrative functions that, that occur with that too, because, you know. We have court administrator, we have records clerks, we have community service, uh, program, and the judge on top of that, so. There's quite a few moving parts and, and pieces to what municipal court offers, so I don't think we're looking at anything that would occur in twenty-sixth or even be considered in twenty-sixth, but certainly is worth a discussion. I hope if anything's off the table. To discuss how we're providing municipal services now in the future.
And the, and the bar association recommendation to the superior court about, um, public defenders, it's gonna be a huge problem down the road as well with, you know, we need three, three or, well, we have one, we'll need about three or four public defenders if that passes. Which, which looks like it's going to, um, be adopted by a Supreme Court, so we'll actually hear more about that tomorrow, probably, yeah. So, I mean, I just think it's a thought, it's a huge amount of money, and if we could probably save seven hundred thousand dollars a year, maybe, six, seven hundred thousand dollars a year. Cause we're paying about a million bucks right now, so.
Oh, sorry, with, with defense and prosecution.
Defense projects about a million bucks, so if we could, if we could save half of that money by the district court taking on municipal, then, you know. It's worth, it's a conversation.
At the cost of justice, yeah.
I mean, I, I think a municipal court is important for us to give our own voice, or not ours, but like the city has the ability to. Appoint its own judge and determine how justice is laid out in, in our jurisdiction, so I think that's really important, but I also think the conversation is important. And understanding what value we're putting on that is important, so if, yeah, if you can save seventy percent on court costs, there's, that's a different discussion. So, I think it would be good to know, especially moving forward.
I'm not privy to any of the details, but I know several years ago, um, the Mexican prosecuting office was approached about providing prosecutorial services for the city. And at that point, it was deemed either, um, unfeasible or they just didn't have interest in taking up the services, and so we continued to contract that out.
Definitely interested to hear more either way, um, it's an interesting concept. Um, we definitely need police, and I don't wanna see the police go anywhere. Um, I'd definitely be interested to hear more about, uh, contracting it. I know what we're doing here is misdemeanors and EWI's and things like that, and most of the felony level or the high level cases that happen in the city go to the county court anyway. So, you know, it's a small percentage of what's really actually done here, and if we can figure out a better way, definitely open to hear more.
Melissa?
Um, yeah, same, um. I, obviously, it's, I, I don't think it's ideal and I'd like to see it stick around, but I also think it's worth, um, another conversation and, um, getting some more info on numbers.
Yeah, I think, I've seen court systems in different areas and I think Shelton does a fantastic job in this room. They do a really good job. So I would hate to see that go, but if the information is there for us, we might as well take a look at it and see if it's, you know, within.
Well, we went off the list, Mark.
Uh, we're down to special event permits, um, and what most of this happens with the public works department, um, with street closures and cleanups and things like that, so Jake and J Harris can speak to this a little more.
Yeah, uh, so special event permit, uh, was, uh, the city court's office actually issued them up until the start of the year. Um, we have admin support, uh, that is taking this task on, and, um, so there's a permitting system, you submit an application, and then we route it around, and, um. With, with, with one of your traffic control plan, uh, we get an insurance certificate, you know, before we issue the permit, which is really key here. So, uh, then you have the cost of actually physically putting out barricades, closing the street, picking up garbage, running the street sweeper down. You know, there's a lot of things that our street department, uh, to support these does. Um, so a couple of the ideas is, um, is to maybe, uh, look at the master fee schedule this fall, we're doing it with the budget. And have a conversation and maybe recoup some of the street costs, uh, some of the, maybe the admin costs. Um, obviously, you don't make money on this type of thing, but maybe recoup some more of the costs might be part of the conversation. Um, in my opinion, the events are great for this community, they define this community, uh, people have a lot of pride in these events. And so, in no way am I saying, you know, that I think that we should eliminate the whole program, but we can look at the revenue side of the program a little bit. And, and have some good conversations, um, about how the permits are issued, how much do they cost? Um, I have the master fee schedule, I thought, and I actually didn't bring it with me, but the event permit's small, I think it was like thirty-five dollars and, uh. Pretty small for some of the larger events, right?
And if it's a nonprofit event, um, it's just the permit fee.
Thirty-five?
Is that right?
Thirty-five plus twenty-five per fair fee.
Twenty-five, and then twenty-five dollars, so, yes, exactly, for just basic services, if there's any barricades, and that can be, that can be all for our avenue, um, twenty-five. If it's a, if it's an event or a fee schedule that charges a admission fee and rate age restricted. We determine what the total cost of that service would be, um, including labor and materials, and we'd go that direction to the event. And I'll, for example, uh, an event on Rowa that like closes a street down for, um, a street dance or something like that sponsored by a local business, that would be. You know, it's a beer garden and things like that, so that'd be age restricted and targeted, so, um, our time to bring in crews, set up the barricades, come in and take down the barricades. Plus the, the permit fee would be applied to the avenue.
Little bit of garbage, maybe run the street sweeper, that's okay.
So that's already, we're already getting cost recovery on those events, right?
True, true.
So it's the nonprofits that we're talking about.
Potentially, you know, I mean, that doesn't cover, that doesn't cover, we're not quoting administration, any PD time, anything like that. If they wanted an officer there, we could supply that. That would be billed directly, but if it's just more awareness, police officers, cause the event's going on, it might be beer garden or something like that, and we have to be aware of that, we don't, we don't add that hours into. We don't have hours for staffing for PD for, for events on this one.
So right now, we have the Forest Festival and the Christmas parade as well?
Oh, we have car show downtown, we have the, um, art walk, we have, um. Let's see, the, the expo, yeah, the rally.
Art walk.
Rally, art walk, yeah.
Last year or the year before, they did like a sidewalk sale thing on Third where they paid for, yeah.
Yeah. Point, point in time count, I think, goes to the special event permit process as well, uh, turkey trot, uh, for everybody in elementary school, it's not on Rowa, but it's over there on, uh.
Franklin.
Franklin, or Pine, I believe, yeah.
And how much would, I mean, if we eliminate everything, would it be the same?
Um, we, we don't, we haven't captured the true cost for, for, um, for the nonprofit events, we haven't tracked those. I know they're doing more of that for Forest Festival, we should have some numbers for you, what that looks like.
It's significant, though.
It's pretty significant. If you're talking about coming in and putting up barricades, um, on four or five different intersections, you know, it depends too. We have call in for overtime. Um, we have a minimum call in for our, our union staff, a minimum call out if they have to come back in and take those down, so, you know, it could, it could build up to a few hundred bucks.
So if you increase the cost to thirty-five dollars, you can double it, it's still seventy dollars, and it's not really helping the whole plot. Right, it's better than nothing, but.
Yeah, that's kind of the theme tonight, right?
Right.
Why don't we look at what other cities do, uh, you know, cities have events, and, uh, we'll get back to you folks, you know, on what other cities do in terms of their fee structure and that sort of thing. Um, Jay, I mean, you might be aware of other fee structures that I'm, uh, aware of. I mean, is it more than thirty-five dollars in other places, or is that seen?
I mean, in other places I've worked, it's been much higher, yeah, even for nonprofit events, when the, the commercial events are always cost recovery, and in some cases, they've done cost recovery for the nonprofit things, so. Just depends on, you know, community's priorities and what are we, what are we trying to do with it, you know, are we trying to recover costs, or did we recover our costs in other ways? If we're having three thousand people downtown spending money in all our businesses for art walk, for example, you know, are we more than making that back up in sales tax? And so does it, you know? It, it's a question to ask, right?
There's intrinsic value there too, right?
If we, if we charge, you know, four thousand dollars and, I, I don't wanna use the art walk too much, it's like, I'm really involved in it, but like, charge four thousand dollars for the art walk, the art walk says, oh, well, we can't do it anymore. How much did we lose out on? In total economic value in the city by doing that, so that's, you know?
And if we're gonna continue to be Christmas Town USA, we need to have a Christmas festival, so, you know, there are things that we cannot backslide on.
I, I, I think increasing it is just a little isn't gonna, I mean, it's, it's, it's not gonna be much in the events, but also it's an issue of our line, so.
I'll run the kitty train no matter what. It's okay whether you close the street or not.
Yeah, I definitely cost recovery for, for profit, and people, like you said, selling tickets and drinking alcohol, that's where they should be paying their share. If we have to have a cop there, it should be paying for that as well. Nonprofit, you know, the, of course, all that stuff is, is a community event. That's, we're, we're, we're sponsoring that by closing the roads and, and doing, doing that kind of stuff.
One consideration we took several years ago was LTAC funds offsetting some of those costs. Some of these events are already receiving LTAC funds.
We can't be talking about LTAC funds right now.
No decisions made tonight, right? But, but that could be a consideration as well as how, how are those funds, because truly, the larger, you know, events, especially nonprofit events, do, do have an element of tourism to it.
Yeah, absolutely, that sounds like an idea too.
We'll know better when we have some of the numbers from Forest Festival.
Yeah.
Um, and then we can convey kind of what that looks like.
But I've, that's, that's, yeah, we're just committee partners, kind of like, I think, from all the events, we're, or, or share, it's usually, you know, just providing those services too, so. Yeah, I don't raise the fee from thirty-five to seventy, sure, that doesn't sound like that's gonna, that's gonna stop Forest Festival from running or the car show or something like that, so I, I just, you know, that could help a little bit if we could get another thousand dollars to be for each.
Oh, probably not that.
Probably not that much.
I don't know, how many, how many special events do we have annually done, twenty-five?
Maybe twenty, twenty-five at the most.
It's a Mother's Day dash.
It's not, yeah, Mother's Day dash, yeah.
So at the end of the day, if you're talking about just the nonprofits, it's, you know, it's half or two-thirds of those, call it whatever, round up to twenty, you know, another thirty bucks.
Yeah, let's, let's just make sure we got cost recovery from the profit, for profit companies that are doing stuff down there and.
Maybe look at LTAC.
And look at LTAC.
Okay, maybe get some better numbers, some LTAC committee could consider.
I, I, I definitely think that, um, LTAC could help with a few of these things we have going on tonight also. I don't wanna say, I'm gonna get yelled at again.
I'm, I'm trying to keep it over base on.
We can apply for our own LTAC dollars, you know that, right?
Yes.
Yes, yes, that is true.
Okay, but, um.
City answers, LTAC.
Like I said, let's build a hotel, then we'll have ten.
There's some things that are identity based, like the Forest Festival and Christmas Town, that we cannot go back on, I think.
Oh, absolutely, no, this, we're not even talking hardly any money here really. I know, six hundred thousand dollars we're trying to get to.
That's why these discussions are so difficult, and you saw that through the dot exercise, right, where, you know, literally trying to split hairs here.
You know, and you sort of sludge there, so, you know, come on now, just, just, just as stressful.
You know, one thing that wasn't put on there was the cost to the street fund, which is a general fund contribution to the street fund, four hundred thousand dollars this year. This is a street fund activity, without barricades, picking up garbage, they're doing things, so even though it's called the street fund, that general fund contribution is economic development, the community, same thing with the homeless, right? Street guys are out there doing that too, so, I mean, we have the word "street" on it, cause those are typically the employees, but it's different, right? So that, there is value, it's just not like they're patching potholes with the four hundred thousand dollars. They're providing a lot of community services also in there.
All right, I, do we have, Melissa, she had anything on, Melissa, you have anything on this? Melissa?
I'm kind of delayed, sorry. Um, no, I don't have anything further on that.
All right, thank you, all right.
So, um, the next line was the homeless response we, we talked about before, and, um. Admin, we budgeted six thousand dollars, we're at twenty-four two ninety nine seventy-five to date because of the twenty thousand dollar contribution to the lifeline, we put that in that line item, uh, this year, so. Um, again, that's dump fees, um, the current, the two Santa cans we have in place right now, um, and incurring the cost for, um, some of the cleanups are around town. Primarily on general fund property and parks.
Kind of feel like we already touched on this.
Yeah.
One thing about the dump fees that might help, uh, is that, I'm gonna be coming to you about, uh, in our, even our fund about getting a hook truck. And what that does is allow us to buy our dumpsters and pull them up on the truck and take large, uh, receptacles, you know, big thirty-yard dumpsters to the dump of, of things. That could be public horse items, the garbage from all these buildings, that sort of thing, so that hook truck, that will be one use, uh, sanders another use, uh, hauling equipment is another use, it's a remote multi-purpose tool. So, uh, over time, you know, some of those, those costs can go down a little bit for, for cleanup. We can actually take the dumpster to the site with the hook truck, leave it, and then come and pick it up, that sort of thing. Like your community cleanup event, same thing, yep.
Yeah, I was gonna say, can we put a twenty-yard dump truck, you know, in certain places and fill it up and then take it, and then staff wouldn't have to be going back and forth, but.
Yeah.
A hook truck? I'm not sure, I, I haven't asked them.
We used to have one, didn't we, the garbage company?
Well, we spent garbage debt.
So didn't we have one, we, we own the garbage company?
No.
Oh.
Not anymore, not mine. Thirty-two years here. Good before that.
Thirty-two now?
Yeah. Um, government relations, so this is our government relations contract, um, and our lobbying efforts, uh, that's thirty-six thousand dollars a year. Um, just some options, we certainly could have a discussion, um, Troy Nichols and I have a, have a meeting scheduled to discuss that more, um, see if we can negotiate a new contract. Most likely, what that would mean if it's a reduced fee, we take on more of a workload, whether it's filling out the capital requests, doing some more lobbying efforts. Um, one thing Terry brought up the other day, much of our requests, um, and the funding that's coming, the requests and the subsequent funding has been for utility projects. And we're not currently billing, um, this work out of the utility, so that's something the utilities could potentially absorb and, and help relieve some of the, um, burden on the, on the general fund. So, um, I think, I think Troy was at before this last session, it was about eleven million dollars that, um, we've been able to obtain through, through those efforts. I think that, uh, his relationship with our delegation is really important, and the time and effort that he's put over there on the Capitol campus throughout the session, um, helps us out, obviously.
It's not just our delegation, I mean, you know, it takes more than three guys to get us money, so, and he, he works, he works the floor, so. I, I think it's, I think it's eleven million dollars, you just said that, and how many years is that?
Uh, is it, um, I think seventeen might have been his first contract, somewhere eighteen, something like that.
That's before the, that's before the sewer coalition and all those millions of dollars for, for Basin Three. Basin Three was before seventeen, I think.
Yeah. Yeah, but he came on after that.
Yeah, but I'm saying that, that's eleven million plus.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Before, you know, I mean, it's a hu- it's a huge.
You know, five hundred thousand dollars this last session for the water tank design, um, you know, it's five hundred thousand dollars that we don't have to put on our rate payers.
Yeah, I, I think he does an excellent job. I think that our delegation also, I'd say we have a great delegation also that gets us the funds, but I think that he, it's not just them. He has to work, you know, another fifty senators or two hundred, you know, legislators to, to. He has to work, you know, another fifty senators or two hundred, you know, legislators to, to also give us some of that money, so I think that having the lobbyists is, is definitely, uh, important, so.
I think it's an investment in capital projects. I think cutting this is not a good idea, but if we can move it to another fund, that would be awesome.
I already thought it was in the utility fund, so I'm sorry. I just figured it already was because of the benefit, he's done, I mean, he's done a great job, but then also, I've tried to snap up, it's hard to get.